"We are gentle and we are free, singing for our lives.
A year ago, your Board of Trustees issued a call to action, and staff, teams, and individual members began implementing it. The call to action named the initial steps towards the vision as: Listening, stepping up, showing up, and speaking out. Today, we communicate our work along these lines for the past 12 months and celebrate our new awareness, knowledge, and community connections."
We believe that this commitment requires that we seek out opportunities to listen to people and ideas that may challenge our long-held assumptions, ways of understanding, commitments, and practices, and may expand the comfort zones that surround even our worthiest habits and traditions. Welcome to today's service. Today's chalice lighting words come from Minister Jay Leach's opening in the January/February 2018 issue of Soundings, the UUCC's publication focused on depth through our reflections. We light this chalice in hope that we will act with greater integrity and with greater impact because we've taken the time to understand before acting.
Morning!
Morning!
Yeah, thank you. Welcome to today's service. I'm Tom Cole. How do you do? We are honored to have guests with us. Our members would like to greet you, guests following the service. So that we might do so, if you are visiting, please raise your hand. Hey, hello. All right. Members, please take a note of guests seated near you after the service. Invite them to join you for coffee and conversation in Freeman Hall. Should it enhance your experience of future services, you can find both a large print order of service and a personal hearing assistance device at the table just beyond the entrance to the sanctuary. If you'd like to learn more about us, please fill out a yellow card. You'll find them, along with the offering envelopes, on the clipboards at the end of each row. Please begin passing them down the row now. Members with a life event to share can fill out the reverse of the card. Put your completed yellow cards in the offering basket when they are passed later in the service. Now, some returning visitors may be interested in hearing about how to become a member. If so, talk with our membership coordinator, Kelly Green. Her contact information is in the back of the order of service. Again, to each of you, welcome. Guess who's up next? It's me. I'm doing the first of our... Usually, it's the first service of the dress rehearsal. This is a picture of members of our Environmental Justice Corps team. They are standing with a longtime leader in the environmental justice movement, Dr. Robert Bullard. They deepened their understanding and gained inspiration from him, as we may do from each other. So our readings are chosen from other members of the congregation because among our sources of wisdom is each other. So the following words are from "If Not Now When?" by Janet Zick, also in the most recent issue of Soundings. And she says the following: "It's so important to me that I redirect my energies towards something that can ultimately make a difference within me, my congregation, and the community at large. I spend far less time wallowing in despair over the state of the Union and more time working to expand my awareness so that I can be a better agent of change. This is an intensive period of learning that builds upon itself. It pains me to think of how much I don't know and thrills me that I'm doing something about it. That is part of the transformation."
Good morning. I'm Margie Storch. I'm reading for Rebecca Visco, who could not be with us this morning. I'm going to read an article from Soundings as well, titled "Facing It," by Tricia Bernard. "I have had the opportunity to explore in depth the challenges our city will face as our climate continues to change. These issues are uncomfortable enough, but nothing is as uncomfortable as the notion set out in one of our core readings. This changes everything: 'Capitalism vs. the Climate,' by Naomi Klein, that the ultimate solution to our climate challenge is not going to be based in our current economic system. I am having a hard time wrapping my head around this. Capitalism underpins all that I understand about my country and my place in it. And I am looking with new eyes now at a system that has sustained my family for generations. I am intrigued and open to Klein's argument that the magnitude of the climate challenge offers us an unprecedented opportunity to redesign our entire society and remediate a whole host of injustices while we were at it. Her argument echoes Wendell Berry's in his essay "Solving for Pattern", suggesting that individual solutions, disconnected from the whole, often create a chain of unforeseen events that can cause future problems. Instead of treating problems in isolation, both Klein and Berry advocate for designing for an entire system. I am coming to understand that the remedy for our imperfect and self-destructive ecosystem will likely require a total societal transformation. Though it seems daunting and perhaps unlikely, I am inclined to feel hopeful. As Emily Dickinson imagines it, 'Hope is a thing with feathers that perches in the soul and sings the tune without the words and never stops at all.' The tune I hear is telling me to take a new look at all I have held sacred and face what I find there."
Until reading the somewhat lengthy-titled book, "How to Talk So Kids Will Listen and Listen So Kids Will Talk", in a UUCC group led by Lynn Friedheim, I didn't actually know how to listen to others tell their stories. Blame it on immaturity, self-centeredness, or privilege. I was either waiting for my turn to talk, auto-completing people's thoughts in my head, or discounting their views because it was different than my own. But after reading the book, I was reminded of the importance of asking questions for clarification rather than making assumptions about people's intentions. I was reminded that my visible attention shows people that what they are saying matters. I learned to hold silence until others are ready to speak. And I learned that when I am truly listening, then someone else is truly heard, and that can be life-changing for us both. Our call as a church requires that we listen with humility and respect and that we seek out opportunities to listen to people and ideas that may challenge our long-held assumptions. The UUA Commission on Institutional Change, created in response to the uncovering of white supremacist practices in our denomination, implores: "In all things, we call on our communities to listen to those directly affected and targeted by hate and to strive to be of use more than to be in control of how we serve in this moment. Our primary task is clear: it is to listen." Over this past year, there have been many opportunities to listen to our Charlotte community. It won't always look like this, where social justice rock stars like Marcus Bass and Bree Newsome come drop knowledge in our own sanctuary on Martin Luther King Jr. weekend. That's almost too perfect, right? No, it's meant leaving this building, going into unfamiliar spaces, surrounded by people we didn't yet know, and learning from their experiences and their expertise. It meant calling on that humility to de-center ourselves in that space, listening with radical love while others speak their truths. It meant recognizing that my comfort does not take precedence over anyone's voice. One of the things I've heard this past year from Charlotte's activists and elsewhere is a tough but true catchphrase of sorts: "If it's not intersectional, it's trash." Short but sweet, right? Did it make you bristle? I did at first. I felt dismissed. I felt I wasn't being heard or respected. And it's okay to feel that way, but challenge yourself to continue to listen to what it means. It means if we are not opening our arms as wide as they can go to include as many points of view as we can, to liberate all of us, to hear the voices of all, then our work is not yet complete. If our work by design is not centering the experiences and wisdom of marginalized communities, people of color, specifically black people, trans siblings, undocumented immigrants, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and queer folks, indigenous peoples, those living in extreme poverty, incarcerated or previously incarcerated neighbors, the differently abled, and all of our youth, then it needs to be expanded until it does. So we're going to do a quick little exercise that I often do as a reminder of all I've heard and all I have yet to hear. Close your eyes to sharpen your listening. And embody your spirit. Open your arms. And imagine that they hold in love all the people you've been listening to this past year. Those beautiful, worthy people whose stories have expanded your worldview. And now, in silence, invite yourself to listen to just one more person. It may be a specific person you've been afraid to let in. It may be a demographic you've left out or ignored. It may be a general willingness to keep open ears, heart, and mind to challenge our ways of understanding. And now, open your eyes and see the space that you're holding for that growth and make the commitment to fill it with wisdom from others. Listening is only the first step in the process of transformation, and it is never-ending. But once you've heard enough to be moved to action, it's time to start stepping up.
Good morning. My name is Colin Hood, and we're going to have a little conversation on stepping up. What is the power of stepping up? What is the power of even one bystander stepping forward and being cause in the matter for change? What happens when that bystander, no longer able to stand by and watch, no longer able to contain their thoughts, their feelings, their passions, no longer content with being a witness but demanding to be heard, felt, seen, to be cause in the matter for change? Stepping up. That's right. As an Army officer, I truly held the oath that I gave to my nation that I would support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I honestly believed I stepped up and stood ready to write a check in the amount of up to and including my life for our nation, for the people of our nation, for our communities and our families that I hold dear. Then I came to Charlotte and became a member of this congregation. I had been a UU in Washington, DC, and thoroughly embraced my church and how they represented my beliefs and my values. And I was comfortable in the fact that they would share with my son those beliefs and values. And I was good with that. I was very right and very wrong. Yes, the church held my values. I wanted my son, now sons, to be exposed to and embrace. It gave them the exposure to the world and in a manner that I wanted them to experience so many different aspects. But I was wrong. I was wrong in that I did not fully embrace the values and position our church played in our community and the community I wanted to see us live and prosper in. Then came the issue of gay marriage that burst onto the scene here in Charlotte. And to my surprise, as well as many others, I am sure, I was not confronted by this issue at all. I was supportive with no reservation. In my heart deeply, I held that all who love and choose the course of marriage should have that capability. Jokingly, in many conversations, I would say that they deserve to be just as miserable as the rest of us married couples. It would be, at this point, you would notice my wife is not in the room. Seriously, though, I was dumbfounded. I was dumbfounded how anyone, and I knew many, could believe otherwise. And that's when I stepped up and I openly supported. I joined our gathering in Uptown and would lend my voice and my support and my presence and my resources in a fight that I knew was right, that I knew was just. I was proud of stepping up. Then I watched my son grasp the ugly truth about homelessness here in Charlotte. It was through our work with Room at the Inn, both here and elsewhere, that my son got in touch with the facts, the really hard facts, about what it means to be homeless, especially on a cold or dreary night, punctuated by the fact that our homeless neighbors come in hand in hand with their wives, with their children, eyes filled with sorrow, filled with struggle and angst, or filled with the warmth of acceptance by others and the support of others, albeit brief, who probably are strangers to the situation that they're in. I watched my son help them with beds, guide them and help them with their bags, serve with great compassion and a smile of connection, and then played with the children and some of the adults with the acceptance that all should possess in any environment. They were his community. They were his neighbors. They were the human connection that our church, our faith, our values are based. I watched as my 11-year-old son stepped up and made a difference in the lives of others. And from that, he gained more. He gained more than they did. As an Army officer and leader of soldiers in combat, I stand humbled in the presence and the impact that my son and so many of you have had in the lives of the homeless community, our neighbors, our friends. So I return to my beginning. What is the power of standing up? What is the power of even one bystander? You. Stepping forward and being cause in the matter of change. And what if? What if they were joined by others in stepping up? That is the power of our church and what we hold dear.
On September 20th, 2016, the Charlotte Police shot Keith Lamont Scott. And Charlotte's world changed. The next day, my employer closed its Uptown offices early, sending everyone home, saying, "Avoid the disturbance. Be safe. Get out of Uptown early." I was not on Trade Street when things turned ugly. I would not have been there even if my employer... I would not have been there even if my employer hadn't sent us home with a concern for our safety. If I'd had difficulty getting home that night, I would have considered the riot an inconvenience. It is a privilege not to show up. Now, many people believe that it was the authorities who incited a riot, not Glow Merriweather, who I understand is the only one charged with this crime. These events occurred just three months after our congregation adopted its new vision. These events altered significantly your board's discussions about what our first steps toward accomplishing the new vision should be. These events helped us to see that as a church, we needed to understand much more deeply, not just what the problems are, but also our own roles in them. And we need to do that before we go out to do something that could alienate the very people we want to help. Or that at best is only charity. Charity only makes the status quo a little more bearable. But it doesn't really change anything. It has been especially gratifying to see how seriously our staff, leaders and members have taken our call to action. It is now reflected in much of our programming and in many of our Sunday services. I think we are starting to understand more deeply. And with that understanding, we are starting to change. I find it interesting that our vision's call for transformation ends with the personal lives of children, youth and adults. I'm told it was a very intentional placement to put ourselves last in what we envision. Ironically, what is last in our vision really has to be first in our lives. We can't transform the world or our community if we don't first transform ourselves. So in our call, we asked our members to show up, and many of us are doing just that and sometimes failing to show up. I'm a little embarrassed to say that only about 4% of us showed up for the Martin Luther King Jr. Parade this year, and a third of those were children. Last fall, Reverend Leach pointed out that just by putting one's white body next to the marginalized who are speaking out makes a difference. When he said, "I'm going to show up wearing a suit and a tie and looking as white as I can," he struck a chord with me. "I can do that." "This is something we can do." I made the personal commitment to show up. And I did start showing up at the women's marches, at the Charlotte Vigils after the Charlottesville protests last summer, and at one of Glow Merriweather's court dates last fall. Some of you showed up at both dates. When we show up, we legitimize the voices of the marginalized and persecuted, and in Glow's case, the prosecuted. We make the courts take defendants' rights seriously, and we make the prosecutors do the hard work of actually proving their case. We've been told it makes a big difference. I was proud to be able to put my white body in that courtroom, looking as white as I could be, bowtie and all. I was proud to be able to- I said that. For me, the bottom line is, it is a privilege not to show up.
Good morning. My name is Sandy Wade. My life is dedicated to being an educator. I'm lucky to be able to teach the four core subjects to nine-to-12-year-olds. But more importantly, I'm responsible for helping shape who they will become as adults. I speak up for justice and equity mostly through my students. They are the future of this world. If I can change how they see this world and do my part to help them walk through life caring about others and seeing the injustices around them, then I've changed the world immensely. My students are just old enough to have the challenging conversations. They like being challenged as individuals and enjoy hearing each other's opinions. As the adult that spends so much of their waking hours with them, I recognize that I have a very powerful influence. Our conversations require them to think about the impact they have on others. We speak of injustices a lot, whether it's within the microcosm of the classroom or the macrocosm of the world outside. We talk about what is fair. We speak of stereotypes. We speak of the past and connect it always to the present. One of the most powerful things I do with my students is an exercise in equity. I split my classroom into two groups. They're not allowed to interact with each other, and they're separated within the classroom. One group, the beads, is marked by wearing beads around their neck for the entire day. They cannot talk unless spoken to. They're not allowed out of their chairs unless they raise their hands, and very often it takes a while for us to call on them. They must drink out of a certain water fountain and use one particular stall in the bathroom. The other children have many freedoms. They may go to the bathroom when they need without asking. They can talk to each other at their leisure and work together in groups. They're given pizza outside at the picnic tables while the beads are required to buy lunch in the cafeteria. They get to play at the playground while the beads play right outside of my classroom without any equipment. My assistant and I are much harder on the beads. If they argue with us or say it's not fair, they're spent- they're sent to spend the day with our behavior specialist. She's ready for this and gives them a job to do around our school for the day. They might end up mopping the floors or scrubbing walls or turning the compost. The most fascinating thing about this exercise is the conversation that occurs afterwards. The beads have the expected reaction. They've been frustrated all day. They talk of jealousy, anger and sadness. This is really good for them considering that most of my class is white. But it's the conversation with the other side that is most interesting. They feel sorry for the beads. They want to help them but know it's against the rules. They always wish there's something they could have done. My response shocks them mostly. "Why didn't you help them?" They look at me incredulous. "It's against the rules, Ms. Sandy. We would have gotten in trouble." This begins our discussion on privilege. And the very real fact that if anything is going to change, the privileged have to be willing to speak up for the underprivileged. They have to be willing to see the injustices around them and speak up for those who aren't being treated fairly. This parallels our lives in so many ways as adults, doesn't it? It's hard for us to speak up to those who don't want to listen. It's difficult to affect change in our world knowing others might get upset or that we might possibly get in trouble ourselves. It's so much easier just to ignore it all. I could choose to do that. That's a glaring perk of my white privilege. But the truth is, there are some people who will only listen to those who look like themselves. It's my job as a white person of privilege to listen with understanding to the marginalized people. But it can't stop there. I have to then lift up their voices to a larger audience, even if I risk angering others. Staying silent simply supports the system. This church has given me such a deeper understanding of myself. Through it, I'm educating myself, whether it's through the many classes offered here or having the amazing conversations that I have with many of you. I'm constantly learning. It's because of the UUCC that I'm beginning to see and confront my own biases and name them out loud. Several times this year, I've said something publicly that I've later thought about and realized I was able to say that out of white privilege. Instead of hiding of embarrassment, I have tried to put my voice to my own white privilege, and I witnessed several of you doing the same thing, and I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank you for walking on this journey with me.
We call your attention to the announcements in the back of the Order of Service. There will be an Open Door School Silent Auction Saturday, March 3rd to raise money for the Sue Riley Scholarship Fund. This is our school's largest financial aid fundraiser each year, and it promises to be loads of fun. I'm the DJ. I exude fun. Next Sunday, March 4th, we will hold our Getting to Know Us sessions following each service. All visitors are welcome. Registration is open for Lunar Rising, which is scheduled for Saturday, March 10th. More information is available for these and additional events in your Order of Service and on Currents, our webpage, access through the UUCC website. In a congregation of our size, we have a number of joys and concerns. We hold in our hearts and prayers Christine Fogarty as her family and Christine recover from surgery, Steve Bivins as he is hospitalized and recuperating for major surgery, Kathy and Joe Spencer as Kathy receives from a recent hospitalization. Everyone is invited to light a candle during the offering to mark a celebration, concern or remembrance.
Good morning. I'm Barry Arant. Please join me for a time of meditation and aspiration, a time for us to breathe together as a congregation. So make yourself comfortable and leave the outside world beyond for just a few minutes. I will lift up my voice and sing whatever may befall me. I will still follow the light which kindles song. I will listen to the music arising out of grief and joy alike. I will not deny my voice to the song. For in the depth of winter, song, like a bud peeping through the dry crust of earth, brings back memory and creates anew the hope and anticipation of spring. Out of a world that seems barren of hope, song decries beauty in the shapes of leafless trees, lifts our eyes to distant mountain peaks, which even if we see them not, remind us that they are there, waiting, and still calling to us to come up higher. Out of the destruction of dear hopes, out of the agony of heartbreak, song rises once more to whisper to us that even this is but the stage setting for a new beginning and that we shall yet take the pieces of our hearts and put them together in a pattern of deeper, truer lights and shades. I will lift up my voice in song, for in singing I am myself renewed, and the darkness of night is touched by the promise of a new dawn. For light shall come again.
Like any spiritual practice, generosity involves intention and weighing a certain measure of sacrifice with other competing values. I strive, not always successfully, to spend my time and treasure as an expression of what I value. I try to remember that each financial expenditure, every donation I choose to make is an opportunity to materially support my beliefs. The benefits I receive from this place, our minister, staff, programs and our spiritual community are well worth my financial support. I hope you agree. There is no better time than now to invest in our vision to create the beautiful world that we know is possible. Our giving today will ensure the survival of this congregation and our values for coming generations. We will now receive the offering.
at long last will roll down like waters, when an unwavering commitment to the good and the true and the beautiful will sustain us like a mighty stream. Grant that we may be endowed anew with wisdom and with courage for the living of these days and for the facing of these troubling hours. Give us yet vision to see beyond what now is, to what can be, to what will be. Enable us to see beauty, to feel wonder, to find spiritual sustenance that can enable and empower us as we journey on. Go in peace, believe in peace, create peace. You may be seated.